Okay. Let's go ahead and get started. Welcome, this is everyone to the Monday, August 10th, 2020 council meeting. This meeting will be held in accordance with Executive Order N-2920, issued by California Governor Gavin Newsom on March 17th, 2020, the Ralph M. Brown Act, California Government Code, Section 54950, and the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act. This meeting will not be physically open to the public. All members of the public may participate and comment via the application Zoom. Meeting information can be found at the website, Remote public comments is also available for the city council meeting by emailing And also, it's available via phone. At this time, can we have the roll call, please?
Member Condit.
Here.
Councilmember Dorosset.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
And Mayor Viera.
Here. Next, we'll move to the invocation by Pastor Steve Walker from the Central Valley Presbyterian Church.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here. Please join with me in prayer. Lord God, I do thank you for those gathered here this evening. Thank you for their willingness to give of their time to serve the people of Series to promote peace and order and justice. Thank you for our health and for our lives, especially during this time of concern. And I do pray that you would help all this evening to act with character, with conviction, to listen with understanding and goodwill. I ask that you would give these men and women wisdom to govern well, the knowledge of the true needs of the community, a confidence in what is right, and the ability to work together in peace even when there's disagreement. We know that your word says that without purpose, your people will fail. And so I pray that you would unite the council behind the purpose of building a thriving and healthy community. I pray these things in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Next, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have no presentations this evening, so we will move to citizens' communication to the council on matters not included on the agenda. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address the city council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. At this time, if there was anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the council on a non-agenda item, please click on the Raise Your Hand button on your screen or let the clerk know by calling in. So it looks like we have a couple of individuals.
Yes, Mayor. First person with their hand up is Lee Brandt. Mr. Brandt, I will unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Thank you. I would just like to recognize the passing of Farin Williams and also give kudos to Jeff Benzinger. I think he did a great job with his article in The Courier. And that's basically, I mean, most of us here have dealt with Farin over many years, and his passing just took me by surprise. So rest in peace, Farin and Karen or Carol. I hope you're okay. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person is Dave Pratt. Mr. Pratt, I will unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
This is Dave Pratt. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I've kind of disappointed. The last meeting, I was logged into Zoom and you never came online. I don't know what the issue was, but I didn't get to see the meeting at all. Two hours later, you're still not online. Anyways, I see they're slurring several of the streets. I hope they do a better job than our neighborhood because the weeds and grass is growing through the spider webs. And, you know, the section of Mitchell Road between Hatch and the bridge is deteriorating quite a bit. There's chunks coming out, and I hope you guys do something about that. This, if it's only guaranteed for five years, I think we're going to be in trouble. It's got to be repaired every five years. Also, I want to give two thumbs up that the sidewalks and stuff for Whitmore Road look good, and the crossover for the pedestrian crossover, I want to get it operational, looks good. But I'm sorry, they took out that island for right turn only because I've seen people doing left turns, and I even watched a person do a flip of UTE there. So these, just putting paint down doesn't work. Thank you.
Are there any other public that would like to speak and address the council on an on-agenda item? Doesn't look like we have anyone else. City Clerk, do you have you received any emails or phone calls?
Not during, for public comment section, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, seeing none, looks like we'll move on to appointments to boards and commissions. We have one item this evening, council designation of a voting delegate to represent the city of Series at the annual League of California Cities Conference. Mr. Westbrook, I don't know if you wanted to give an overview or update on this. I mean, I think we all know what it is, but for the public, maybe it would be good.
Yeah, so every year, the League of California Cities holds an annual conference, and they have a meeting of the elected bodies. And so each of the member cities selects one member of the council to represent the city at that meeting. This year, because of COVID-19, that conference will not happen. It'll be done virtually. They're still calling for a representative from each city council to be selected. I think last year, Vice Mayor Rhino was the one that attended the conference as the delegate. So just one of the council members needs to volunteer to be the delegate for this year's conference coming up in October.
Okay. Is there anyone that would like to nominate or raise their hand for this role?
If Vice Mayor Rhino will do it again, I would nominate her.
Well, the problem is Vice Mayor Rhino will be on the road. So Vice Mayor Rhino will not be available.
I was trying to throw you down the river. Go ahead. I will do it if nobody else will do it. I won't be here, so I can't do it. Anybody, anyone have any issue with that? Councilmember Klein or Condit?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Tom, do we require a vote of this or just the direction?
Direction is fine on this one. Although, we just have to report it to them, so I'm not sure what format they like. They want to vote, okay.
Yes.
And Diane, do we need an alternate?
Yes, typically, we let them know who the primary and who the alternate is.
Okay. Between Councilmember Condit and Councilmember Klein, would one of you like to be the alternate?
I'll step up and do the alternate. Okay.
All right, so can I take that as a motion?
Yeah.
Does someone want to second that?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can I have the city clerk call the vote, please?
Councilmember Condit. Councilmember Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration. Is there anyone on the council that would like to declare a conflict of interest on any of the 14 consent calendar items? Or, I guess, the other just discussion, so. Okay, hearing none, we will move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or the public for special consideration. Otherwise, recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by roll call vote. This time, is there anyone on the council that would like to have a consent calendar item poll for further discussion?
Items number 13 and 14.
Anyone else? All right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to have a consent calendar item poll for further discussion other than item 13 and 14? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone. Have you received any calls or anything?
I received some questions on items 13 and 14 from Mr. John Warren.
Okay, okay. We can address those when we get to them. So with that, I'll look for direction from the council on the other items. We've approved 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 3, 8, 4, 5, 8, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, and 12.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit. Councilmember Dorosset.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Okay, item number 13, resolution number 2020-88, ordering the levy and collection of special taxes for the fiscal year 2020/2021 within the City of Series Community Facilities District Number One. Councilmember Condit?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if you don't mind, we can go ahead and handle both items 13 and 14 as my comments relate to both, and I'm sure we can vote on both as well if that's okay.
Okay.
Mr. Westbrook, I just have a few questions. If you can answer them for me, I'd appreciate it. So how much did the city collect in tax raises from these two districts from last year, last fiscal year?
I think the amount was around $714,000.
Okay, $714,000. And how much are we anticipated to collect this fiscal year?
I think that amount goes up, Letitia, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe around $20,000 with the increase in the assessment that's being considered this evening.
Okay, and we've already considered that. We've already budgeted for those funds.
Correct. Correct. They're transferred in from this district into the accounts for police, fire, and parks.
Okay, but it goes to the general fund, correct?
It goes to the police, fire, and parks in the general fund. It goes into their budgets.
Okay, so is that earmarked?
No, it just goes into their budgets, as their budget stream.
Okay, as a budget stream. And I just, so when have, when, what is the historical precedence with these?
You cut out there a little bit, but I think that the creation of these, or the creation of these were specific to provide additional funding stream for our police department, our fire department, and our parks maintenance, specifically in the new areas of town.
How long ago were they created?
I think CFD number one was created in early 2002, and I believe that CFD number two was created in 2006. So any residential subdivision since that date were required to annex into the Community Facilities District, and so those homeowners pay on their property tax and annual assessment.
Okay, and so just from your knowledge, since 2002, since we've been doing this every year, has a council ever voted not to raise the tax on these?
No, it always goes up a incremental number, usually CPI, so it's usually 2% to 3%. I think in this time, it's 3.31%, but it cannot ever exceed 4% a year.
Okay, but we've consistently done this. It's been a precedent. We've said consistently.
Every year, the assessment has been raised. Correct.
Okay. I would like to, I guess, make a plea to the council, to my colleagues, that we consider not raising the tax and just keep it as is. We are in unprecedented times dealing with the pandemic. There's a lot of folks out there who are struggling financially, and I do think it is in the best interest of the taxpayers to consider their needs. And I have a hard time supporting tax increases in a good fiscal time, let alone in a pandemic. And it would be very, very difficult for me to support a tax increase regardless, but I would like to see this not increased in consideration of the taxpayers, and I would like to make that plea to my colleagues if possible.
Question for you, Tom. I think if we don't approve this, it's an all or not. Is that correct?
No, I believe that the assessment would just stay the same for the previous year to the coming year.
Okay, so. And the annual increase is set in there is to, I mean, obviously, $20,000 is not a huge sum of money spread across these areas, but that's used for cost of living increases for our emergency services personnel, correct?
Yeah, it's just cost of doing business. So it pays for park maintenance, and it pays for police and fire services.
Okay.
I just think it would alleviate some strain on the taxpayers. This is a tax historically passed down by Sacramento, and I do think with these unprecedented times that we should consider alleviating some of that strain. And that's just my plea tonight. That would be a motion if there's a second.
Are there any comments from the council for a second, before I open this up to see if anyone would like to comment in the public? Okay, hearing none. I want to open up to the public for anyone that would like to comment on this item. Just for clarification, Tom, is that the $20,000, that's for the one facilities district, or is that for two?
That's for both.
So it's $10,000 per district roughly, or is it?
Yeah, I mean, roughly. I think that it's, there's more users in District One, so the proportion is probably higher in District One. I think there's around 1,750 parcels in District One, and there's like 150 in District Two.
How much does that work out to then for a parcel?
Well, in District One, it's $312, and in District Two, it's 924, I believe.
For the year.
Correct. Assessment on their property taxes.
But I mean, how much, how much does that equate? Is it going from 310 to 312, or what?
It's going up. It's going up in District One. It's going up $11, and District Two, it's going up $27.
Thank you.
So it's going up a little less than a dollar a month in the one district and $2 a month in the other district, a little more.
Essentially, yes.
Okay. Okay, at this time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, I don't see anyone. City Clerk, do you have any one that?
Yes.
Being here.
Yes, Mayor. I received an email from John Warren and a series of about eight questions or so. So do you want me just to go through each one?
Sure.
Okay, first one says regarding the Melrose tax and how they are assessed, are these taxes, in addition to regular property taxes, paid by the homeowner?
Yes.
Next question, how is the tax amount determined? What is the baseline for the tax on each property?
So it was created, when it was formed, there was a formula that was done back in the early 2000s that created kind of an impact on those new residential lots versus their services or the cost of services for police, fire, and park maintenance. And that's how the base was established. They've generally gone up between anywhere from 2% to 3.5% a year since they were formed.
Next question, normal property taxes can increase as much as 2% each year. These taxes by as much as 4%, question mark?
Yes. This year, it's going up 3.31%.
Next question, are these properties paying two sets of property taxes each year, one to the county and one to the city?
It all goes to the county and then is distributed back to the city.
Will Melrose ever be discontinued for these homeowners?
It's not likely.
How much money is realized for the general fund from these taxes?
$715,000.
How much more money will be realized with these amount, with these amount 4% raises this year?
Approximately $20,000.
End of questions.
Okay. Mr. Westbrook, I could speak because I deal with this. We're not unique in this, correct? Every city does it?
Yeah, most cities have Melrose or Community Facilities District, correct?
Okay.
Mayor.
I'm sorry.
Can I ask, I just, I just need clarification. Melrose is, when someone buys a home, they know that they are paying Melrose when they buy a particular home. Is that correct?
Correct.
So it's not, I'm sorry?
It's a disclosure on their purchase agreement.
So it's not like it's a surprise to them now that they're going to have a Melrose tax?
No, and for Mr. Warren, he doesn't live in an area that's subject to this anyway.
All right, thank you.
But it is up to us as a city whether or not we choose to raise that tax annually.
Correct.
And what I'm asking is the council keeps it the same. We're in unprecedented times, and I do, I do think it's in the best interest of the taxpayers to alleviate some strain during the pandemic, if possible.
And if we do that, what does that do to police, fire, and our parks personnel that the public also expects to be taken care of?
We would essentially be operating under the same budget as last year, the $715,000.
But there are annual increases on all of our wage earners. So we're actually, and it would be negative to what we did last year.
Yeah, we would be sacrificing the $20,000.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Oh, I see Mr. Brandt. I don't know if you wanted to comment. It looks like his hand is up. I'll open it back up. I did close it, but I'll open it back up.
Okay, sorry for chiming in so late. I think it would be a nice gesture, you know, considering everything that's going on for this year, to, for somebody to second it. And my question would be, what about next year? Just roll around again next year at the same 3%? Give or take?
Yep, give or take. I mean, it's an annual assessment that is raised every year.
Yeah, okay. You know, me personally, I think it would be a nice gesture. It doesn't seem like it's a whole heck of a lot, but at least it's something. Thank you.
All right, do we, I'll bring it back to the council again. Is there a second?
I think Councilmember Klein had a question. His hand was up.
I'm sorry, I didn't see him on there. Okay. So my next question is, let's say we forego the $20,000 this year, okay, and we don't take it, and then it comes around next year. Because we didn't take the increase this year, there's a possibility that the increase next year could be the maximum of 4% to make up for the losses for the parks and public safety. Is that correct?
That's a possibility, but generally goes up on the CPI, the construction cost index. So if the CPI says that it can be 3%, then that's what we have to be, 3%. It's not automatically going to be 4%.
Yeah, it's not what we need, Councilmember Klein. It's tied to an index based on inflation and other things. So the percentage that we have now is based on the current inflation and wage increases. If by chance that goes down, there could be a chance that there's no increase. Again, it's not, it's not anything that we do. It's tied to a published rate. So my next question would be, we are in the process right now of putting together a park in Eastgate. And some of this, these fees go to park maintenance, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll ask one more time. We have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Have a question. Sorry. We have, we have two parks, correct? Or just Eastgate? Two undeveloped parks, you mean? Yeah, that we're working on.
Yeah, going to be Lions Park in the north, and then Eastgate Park is currently under construction. And then the third park would be at the Whitmore Mansion at some future point.
And then just going back to the general fund, I know that we're going to do an update in September, which is coming up here pretty quick. Is any of this money tied to that? I didn't catch that.
No, this is going to be collected this year that we're in, so we're not going to see it for some, some period of time.
Okay, that's all. Okay. All right, doesn't look like there is a second, so I'll ask the council for either another motion or further discussion.
What was the motion? I missed it. I heard that, I heard Councilmember Condit was...
The motion was to not raise it this year, was to keep it as the fiscal year of last year, which was $715,000.
I would, I would second that.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Condit. Councilmember Dorosset.
No.
Vice Mayor Rhino.
Yes.
Councilmember Klein.
Yes.
And Mayor Viera.
No.
Motion passes 3-2.
Okay. And that was for, that was for both resolutions, correct?
Yes.
Okay. We have no unfinished business this evening, no public hearing, and no new business, so we'll move to the discussion items. The first is item 15, policy direction regarding the creation of an appeals board.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Councilmembers. As the staff report alludes to, we have a development project within the community. There's been a discrepancy between the standards, as interpreted by the developer and the project engineer versus our city engineer and engineering team that reviewed those. With the recent changes to our municipal code, it allows for the creation of kind of an appeals board in concert with the California Building Code. Staff worked with the developer who requested the creation of an appeals board through the California Building Code. That happens one of two ways. Either the elected body, which would be the Series City Council, can hear that, hear that appeal, or you can direct staff to create an appeals board. Because of the circumstances regarding this project and its kind of technical in nature, staff is recommending that the council move forward and direct staff to create an appeals board to hear this matter. That's really the decision that's before the council this evening. If the council elects to reject the staff recommendation and say that you wanted to be the appeals board, then we wouldn't necessarily discuss any portion of that item, and we'd bring it back to a future meeting as directed by the council.
Okay. Are there any questions of staff? Back to the panelists to make sure. Okay, I just had a couple of comments. One, I'm a little leery of creating an appeals board. We just went through an exhaustive municipal code review and updated our codes, and if we now create an appeals board, anytime someone doesn't like one of our standards, they can appeal it, if I'm hearing this correctly. So in essence... So in essence, it's, um, you know, creating another entity, I, 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 I think it would be better if we modify the municipal code to more reflect what we apparently want to achieve. I, I would, I would suggest that that staff brings back code changes and we address it that way as opposed to an appeals board because um, I, I, I just think it opens up a lot of potential challenges, I should say.
Yeah, and Mayor, Mayor, I think that in this circumstance, um, staff isn't so worried about that because the, kind of the decision at hand isn't really related to the municipal code. It's related to our public works improvement standards. Um, so it's not necessarily, uh, related to the actual Muni code and its implementation. It's more of a design standard for a, a, a public project.
Oh, well, e- either so, again, you know, the, our design standards are, are what we've created and we, we constantly look at those and update them, at least I'm assuming that we do. Um, so I you know, I, just me personally, I, I, I think that that's best left. Um, you know, to city staff and direction that they provide. As opposed to, uh, creating a board, but if the council chooses to go that direction, uh, again, I might suggest that it be, it stay with the council because if you create an appeals board and they decide to do something that the council doesn't want, what's going to be the mechanism for that? Um, is, is the appeals board their review and recommendation or, or, uh, suggestion? What governs or does it come back to the council? Um, I, I, I just, I mean, that's why cities have city standards. That's just my opinion. Does anyone have any comments? Councilmember Klein?
You know, I, I sit here and I listen to your, your comments, Mayor. And, you know, I, I talked to Mr. Westbrook about this on, on Fri- or Thursday. And, you know, I, I have a tendency, I gotta, I gotta agree with you. We went through the general plan update and tried to do some of our municipal, you know, codes and things. That, you know, we've already had a couple of things come back before the council to try to resume, to rezone things after we went through it and people had the opportunity to do it. Uh, but yet I've had firsthand experience in the last couple of months of people that don't agree with, you know, the findings that, that, you know, is going on with trying to do some implementation, uh, on parcels. So, uh, you know, if it, if it becomes to a, a, a point where it's exhausting, then maybe, maybe the direction would go to a, appeals board. But, you know, being on the city council for nine years now, I think we've only had three, three things come before us that, you know, because of the city standards or, you know, what we had and what we wanted. And so we're doing something right. So I can agree with you, Mayor, that, you know, uh, I don't know if we want to go that direction.
Okay. I, I mean, I'm, I'm not saying that I'm not supportive of changing something that needs to be changed. I just don't know that creating an appeals board is the mechanism for that. I, I think if, if we feel something should be changed, staff should be supportive of that and make a recommendation to us that we need to change the design standard or update it. I, I think that's the best way to go about it. Um, but if the council feels that we need to have a policy board, then um, you know, then that's obviously up for discussion. Does anyone else on the council? Vice Mayor Rhino?
I agree that ultimately it should be appealable to the city council because we are looking out for the best interest, I think, of the community. And my fear would be that if you had an appeals board that didn't have that same connection, that they may look at something even differently than we would. And I agree that if there seems to be an issue with something in our standards and then staff should look at having a discussion and potentially changing it. But my other question is, I know in the planning commission, when somebody has an issue with a determination by the planning commission and they want to appeal it, don't they, Mr. Westbrook, don't they have to pay a fee to appeal to the city council? That, that decision?
Correct.
So, and, and if somebody say we don't do this appeals board and it's a public works matter and they don't agree with our standards and it were to come before us, would they have to pay a fee to appeal it to us?
That's what I'll have to research because that's not something we've ever had to do before. I mean, this is new. Usually it's related to an entitlement project that was processed through the planning commission and this application was not.
All right, and, and that would be my concern. I, I, I wouldn't want to see someone who's having a, a different point of view on something like that have to pay to do an appeals before the city council.
Are there any other comments? Councilmember Dorosit?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd have to agree with, uh, Vice Mayor Rhino and the mayor and Klein. You know, again, I know my client said he's on it for eighteen or eight years. I've been on it for thirteen years and I've been alongside of the mayor right now and we hadn't seen much of anything that really had issues. Again, if there's a situation with police or fire and it would go to our attorneys, it would come to us, we'd make that final decision. You know, you're talking about standards and all that stuff. You know, uh, I, I would just hate to see that once and again, bringing in the Muni code, that we would have a board. Uh, not, not to be crazy, sound crazy like Murph or other types of people, as the vice mayor stated, that, you know, maybe there's some really underlying issues on why that this wanted to be passed. I mean, we have a planning commission, we have Measure H, we have the city council. And, uh, I just think, you know, we were elected officials and we need to be allowed to do our jobs and the staff needs to bring stuff forth. If we need, I know we did the entire Muni code. And, uh, you know, I would just hate to put a, a board of people there that really aren't dialed into what's going on as far as the city's concerned. That's it.
Are there any other comments from the council before I open this up to the public? Okay, at this time, um, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone that is, uh, would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Looks like we have one.
Yes, Mayor, if we can just ask that person to please state their name for the record, since it's just showing their phone number. I will unmute your mic now.
It's, uh, Tim Armstrong, Steel Co Construction. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, we've been, we've been dealing with our situation with the city of Series for our storm water retention, uh, underground since April with, uh, between Mr. Padilla and Mr. Westbrook. Tom has been working with us on this, but we feel that the stormwater standard that was provided to us in page SD twelve A asks us to maintain our stormwater drainage, uh, onsite. Unless there was other, uh, facilities available, thus being, uh, positive drainage to the street, which there is not. And then, um, uh, retention ponds, which there is not available in that industrial track area and which we're talking about is the Miller Industrial Track. We've been asked, we've provided a, um, a submitted, uh, engineered design underground system. Uh, that was going to maintain our water on our site. Uh, my owner was, uh, fine with it. We feel that we've provided something that is adequate. Uh, but Mr. Padilla is asking us for, uh, more of type of under, underground storage, which we think is, is, uh, not something that we need to do because we've provided enough for what we have, for what we're on our site, which is what page SD twelve A tells us.
Mr. Armstrong, um, just, just a minute. Um, the city attorney wants to speak. I, I, I don't believe we're able to talk about this item.
Yes, we shouldn't discuss the specifics tonight. Either the appeals board hears it or you hear it and you shouldn't hear this information unless you are the, going to be the deciding, uh, body.
And, and?
The only issue tonight is whether to appoint the appeals board or have that remain with the city council.
Right, and so just Mr. Armstrong, the, the reason for that is because the agenda only talked about creating an appeals board. It didn't talk about your specific project, so we can't discuss that because it wasn't agendized.
I see. Okay. So I guess that the way that I'm looking at it is the council is not approving an appeals board the way that I've heard the last three council members talking.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll know that here shortly, but I, I guess what I don't want you to think is that that doesn't mean that a standard can't be changed. I just think we believe, or we'll find out here if we all agree that the best way of doing that is via an update to our city standard that we give direction to staff, not via an appeals board.
I see. Okay.
So?
All right, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this item? Okay, I don't see anyone else, so I'll bring it back to the council for further discuss- discussion or direction.
Move to say there's no appeals board.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Move to say there's no appeals board to hear matters related to the limitation of city codes and standards.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, well, actually, we're not, this is just direction, right?
Uh, yes, it's direct, if the motion passes, the direction would be then not to create the appeals board and that jurisdiction would remain with the city council.
So, so you do need an official vote, though? It's not just discussion, okay?
What? We don't need a vote, but we need clear direction and the best way to do that is just to go ahead and follow up with the vote.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second. Can we have the roll call?
Councilmember Condit?
Aye.
Councilmember Dorosit?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Biara?
Yes.
Motion passes five, zero.
I would just want to again mention to Mr. Armstrong and I would ask that our staff, you know, get together with him and, and, and see if there is something that is in our current standard that needs to be updated or provides with a little more flexibility. Uh, I, I, if, if he's looking at doing underground storage, that typically is up and above what most people do, so I, you know, and, and it is on private property, so I, I would like to think that, um, that they are going up, up and above, but if, if you can take a look at that, um, I would appreciate that.
Yeah, we've, uh, we, we, we've done that, Mayor. I don't know if there's more to do, um, but, uh, but bring it back to the, to the council for the decision.
Okay. Okay. All right, uh, item number sixteen, policy direction regarding fireworks sales, outdoor cannabis cultivation and sidewalk vendors. Mr. Westbrook?
Yeah, I'm going to start backwards and kind of move forward. So, um, as we, as was mentioned earlier in the meeting, um, the council did a, a, a comprehensive code update. There was a couple of things that we missed in that, um, effort that we wanted to have for consideration from the council. In addition to the recent, uh, aerial fireworks display that we had in the city of Series, there was some, uh, direction provided to me by the council to have a discussion about the safe and sane. So I'm going to start kind of backwards. Um, starting with the, uh, sidewalk vendors. Um, as you know, um, state code does allow sidewalk vending. When we went through our Muni code update, we created a process by which people that did, uh, street vending can get permits. Um, that code became effective on May first. Since then, our code enforcement office has been doing, um, education and in some instances enforcement of those codes. Um, to date, nobody has gotten the permits that are needed. Um, so working with our, uh, code enforcement unit, um, they indicated that there were some other jurisdictions nearby that had some other standards that we could apply to potentially have these in our tool belt. Um, and so one of them was, um, from Stanislaus County, it allows the itinerary vendors, street vendors, kind of the same, uh, type of language. It allows the enforcement officer to confiscate the product that somebody is selling if they don't have a permit. Um, we believe that that would probably get somebody's attention and so again, we'll just be looking for direction on if, if you want us to add some, uh, language, uh, like that to our existing code. The second was as it relates to, um, outdoor cultivation of marijuana. Um, it was clear in the, um, municipal code update that it was not permitted in industrial or commercial areas. However, we failed to, uh, recognize residential areas and so our recommendation would be to add a prohibition for, um, outdoor, uh, marijuana grows within the city limits as it relates to, um, the residential areas. And then lastly, this is more of kind of a free flow. Um, staff didn't necessarily come with a lot of, uh, direction here or standards, really looking for council direction. So there was some desire to perhaps look at, um, maybe limiting the sales of the safe and sane fireworks. Um, uh, during the Fourth of July each year, uh, within the city of Series. And some of our research we did, um, there's about three hundred jurisdictions within the state that do allow the safe and sane fireworks. There are some, um, in remote areas or mountainous areas where there's high fire danger, that they are not permitted. Um, but largely, a lot of the central valley cities and more of the, uh, the urban areas do allow safe and sane fireworks. So those are really the things that we wanted to get some direction on tonight. Um, the fireworks, the sale of safe and sane. Um, adding language to prohibit outdoor cultivation for marijuana in residential zones. And then if we were going to add some language related to the sidewalk vending, um, as it were, as it applies to confiscation of their food product. So with that, I'd answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. Why don't we, why don't we take these one at a time? It might be a little bit easier. So let's start with the sidewalk vendors. Um, is there anyone on the council that has any comments on the sidewalk vendor issue? Councilmember Dorosit?
Yeah, you know, I, I, I think it's time. I mean, obviously we've done some outreach since May first for the permits and stuff that, that have been needed, you know? Uh, it does look like they're doing some pretty good business around there, but I think since everybody else has to have a permit, they have to have a permit and if they don't, then they're off, there are, has to be some action taken in regards to just not a slap in the hand.
Okay. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Well, Mr. Westbrook can attest to this, that he gets at least one call a week from me or maybe a couple of times because it seems to be the same vendors in the same place and I don't believe, I think they've even been ticketed and they still continue to, to come back. And I think it takes, um, a large amount of staff time to continually be going out there and it's a real easy fix. There's a permit, just get your permit. Like, you know, a, a restaurant or somebody else has to do. We're not, we're not saying you can't be there, but there is a permit and they've all been told that, so I definitely am supportive to start confiscating their, their fruit and things.
Councilmember Klein?
You know, I, I do agree with my two colleagues, you know, Tom. We've had a discussion about this the last couple of times that we've met. And one of the things I brought up is, you know, a while back, there was a, a, a vendor that had a snow cone, uh, shop that was on the corner of Caswell and Central that was up there temporarily and she got a, you know, a temporary permit, but she wanted to be up year round. And we asked her to go through the process that everybody else did. Uh, you know, and, uh, I think that it's only fair that, you know, if we're asking one person to go through that process, then everybody should have to go through that process. And I know that, you know, come, come February, when it's Valentine's Day and these people come up, you know, real quick for, you know, selling flowers on Valentine's Day. That, you know, it could be a hardship when, you know, you confiscate all their, all their roses and stuff, but you know, we need to get the word out that, you know, we required it for that, you know, lady that wanted to extend her temporary permit. Because that's what our code says, that it should be done for the, for everybody.
I, I agree with my colleagues. Um, I, I, I feel very, um, sorry for our brick and mortars that are there 365 days a year, have all the requirements and the permitting that is there, and I'm not against private enterprise by any way, shape, or form, but when they have the ability to, you know, deal with Valentine's Day and everything else, now they're dealing with a ton of people on the street corner who have nothing invested, and if we sit up here and we talk about wanting to have shopping and dining for our residents, if we make it easy for someone to just pop up on a street corner without any permitting or anything else, and again, like Vice Mayor Rhino said, if they go through the process, that's fine, but I don't think that they should be given a free pass while all of our other brick and mortars who are paying taxes and are investing a lot of time and effort into making our city what it is, then I think at least if you're going to be on a street corner, you've got to go through some, some type of the same requirements that, that the brick and mortars do, and that's just my, my opinion or feeling of it, so if there aren't any other comments from the council, I'll open this up to the public to comment on this, on this item, so this time, anyone in the audience who would like to speak, please raise your hand. It looks like Mr. Brant would like to speak.
I'll unmute his mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Yeah, my question is, there's a taco truck at the corner of Fowler and Mitchell, is that considered a sidewalk vendor?
Nope, and it's permitted.
It is permitted.
Yep.
Okay, then never mind, you answered my question, thank you.
Like Mr. Yankley would like to speak?
Yes, Mayor, let me unmute his mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Oh, it's working tonight. You know, I have something to say about that street vendor thing, first of all, state of California must be a bunch of idiots for even acting that thing, and that guy should be removed from whoever, what's his name, Leno or something, I can't remember, anyway, I agree with the council, the ones that might agree anyway, about taking possession of these people's products and their equipment, without, you know, some kind of, you know, waiting period and letting them come back again, and then finally, you know, go through some process, I hope when somebody's called on this, that they expedite it right away, because like you just said, these people set up again and again and again, and they have no fear of our government here in series, let alone some other city government or county government, and one of the things I'd like to know is if the city does come out to one of these street vendors and commandeered their product and their equipment, is that cost of picking that up gonna go back to these people that have violated our codes? Are we just gonna let that go to the side and just be happy that we're hopefully stopping them from, from doing what they've been doing for months and years and years, and one of the other things I'd like to know, too, is, I don't know about the county of Stanislaus County or the city requirements, but when I was a young man in high school, before I could get a job in a fast food place, I had to be checked out by the county health department, how do we know that some of these people that are out here on the streets don't have some health issues, they might have a mascot, maybe they take it off, we don't see them, you know, I mean, I don't drive by there all the time, but what are their health conditions, they might be here illegally and brought some kind of disease over with them, and regardless if it's us dealing with them on the street, they're dealing with people when they're not wearing masks, so what are we gonna do about the health issue with them playing with food and serving it to someone on the street?
The permit requires approval from the health department, so we can't do it for anybody that's not supposed to be there, don't know what they have.
Do they have to take, like, I remember, again, we go back to when I was a young man, I had to take an x-ray, had to be checked out for tuberculosis, what's the requirements for the county?
The county's requirements are the county's requirements, I'm not familiar with them, all that we're asking for, if they get a permit, is that they have health department approval and/or clearance.
Could you find out so the general public can establish what the requirements is for the health issue for a street vendor? I don't think anybody in the city knows what it is, I don't.
They have to, any food handling you have to, that you're going to do, you have to take a course, it's online, but you go through a number of modules, and then you get issued a certificate, and it's based on the ability to recognize what you need to do for sanitation when you're serving food.
But no, no physical contact with a doctor or anything?
No, no.
Nothing about diseases or nothing?
No, at least that's not what happened when I had to go through the process, but it was pretty rigorous.
So this is for, again, these people that are paying high fees for their establishments, their restaurants, fast food business, or, you know, your AMPM market possibly with hot dogs and all this stuff, so what you're just saying, each one of these businesses in town that are legit, they've had to go through this, correct?
Correct.
So by all means, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, if it was in the power of the city, I'd handcuff them, I'd put them in jail for a while, and I'd take their stuff and put a fine on their soul high, they'd never want to try to do it again in series. That's it. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak on this item? I'll come back to you, Captain Crane here in just a sec. Okay, I don't see anyone else in the audience, so I will bring it back to the council, and Captain Crane, you had a comment?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
I did receive a written comment.
Okay.
Regarding sidewalks, this is from Mr. John Warren, the comment is, I would recommend the council reinforce the rules regarding sidewalk vendors, I see them within our city, within our city blocking the sidewalks, and they do not, and do not observe where they wash their hands or have restroom facilities, furthermore, who watches their business while they're away doing their business and washing their hands? End of comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Crane?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. A quick question, this stuff that we're gonna confiscate, so the product that we confiscate, where are we gonna store that?
In the dumpster.
So we can destroy that immediately?
Yeah, it's not, the county's code, they discard it, so if we write language that suggests that it would be discarded, then that's, that's the answer, so we'll have to consider options for the council when we bring it back, but essentially, the county's ordinance says that it's disposed of.
Okay, so we're not gonna be responsible for storing anything, we can just violation, get rid of it, and we don't have to store it?
I believe that's the way the county's ordinance is written, yes.
Okay, all right, that was my question, thank you.
I would want to make sure, though, that we provide them at least one written notification that if it happens again, the product will be seized, I don't want us to do it the first time that we're there, I believe we owe them that. Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mayor, the problem is that it's the same people dropping off the same people, and they've all been told, and they've even received their fines, and they're still coming back, so you can give them a warning, and what they'll do is, they're gonna send somebody else out there, same person that owns the, the business, but they'll send another person out there, and so you're gonna just get into the same routine that's been going on now, and that's why I was really happy when Mr. Westbrook came up with something that actually has teeth in it, the only way they're going to stop is when their product gets taken from them, because it's just like those illegal flower vendors that you see popping up on different corners, I'm not talking about during Valentine's Day, but the ones that are illegally operating, they get dumped there by, just like they used to when they would be in our city, they get dumped by the same person, and if they get a talking to, well then the next time they dump them, they dump a new person, so I don't want to see them get another slap on the, the hand, if we agree that we want to implement that we take their product, then we take it the first time, because in truth, it probably isn't the first time, they've just put a different person out there.
Okay.
Does the county policy currently have a warning period or?
Not that I'm aware of.
And is there a way to track the company or the vendor, not the individual per se? Have we done that, or?
That's who we're trying to get to when we've made contact, is we're trying to not talk to the vendor, we're trying to talk to their boss, so that we can get to the appropriate party to get the permit, and nobody ever contacts us.
And let's say hypothetically, a brick and mortar didn't follow these procedures, I mean, they would be fined immediately, right, or what would be the process for someone who didn't follow who's a standard business?
We'd probably inform them of that until they can sell from inside their establishment.
Okay, well, I do, I do think it's an equity issue, I think it's about treating people equally, and those who follow the process, I would tend to agree with the county's policy in following that.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
And we do know for a fact that there are the same people that are dropping them off, because one day, I happened to see the person that was dropping them off, and he was unloading the carts and everything, and I took a picture of his truck with the license plate, sent it to the city manager, and I think it was last weekend, I believe, Mr. Westbrook, there were two in the Save Mart Shopping Center, and it was the same guy that had dropped them off before, and he's out there doing it again, so again, I just think we're done with warnings.
Okay, so it sounds like.
We've got the direction we need.
The council wants to confiscate the product, I hear Vice Mayor would like to do it, you know, immediately upon it, what's the rest of the council's feel, so that we can give them some direction on this? I'd agree. Okay.
I would agree with the direction of Vice Mayor.
Okay, all right, so I think you have the direction you need, Tom?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let's move on to outdoor cannabis cultivation. Any feedback on that, I, I think what you're asking here is if we should, that was something that was kind of an oversight previously, and you want to clean that up a little bit?
Correct, so outdoor marijuana cultivation is not allowed in industrial or commercial zones, if it was going to be allowed, it'd have to be on the interior of a building in both of those zoning designations, what we've seen in the community is people growing it in their backyards, not within a greenhouse or any other type of building, but just growing it in their backyards, and that's what we want to prohibit.
Okay. Any comments from the council on this, Councilmember Klein?
I thought we had language in there that it could not be visible for the public, so if somebody was in their backyard, that's visible.
Unless it was in a greenhouse or a shop building or some other building, it was grown indoors, so this was strictly for outdoor cultivation.
Okay. I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with you cleaning that up.
I am, too.
I am.
I am.
At this time, I'll open it up, if anyone in the audience would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Looks like Mr. Yankley would like to speak.
Mr. Yankley, I will unmute your mic.
Mr. Westbrook, could you establish this, what they're talking about tonight, so I can get a better idea of what's going on? On the marijuana in the backyard or whatever you're talking about?
Yeah, so I think what the council is suggesting is that it cannot be visibly, visible and grown in outside in a residential neighborhood.
Right, okay, are, so I understand that right now, but on that same avenue of the marijuana thing, when it goes on the inside, are they still gonna have somebody come and inspect these homes for ventilation and all the different requirements they're supposed to have?
I don't know if that's part of this discussion, I think this is just strictly for everybody to get outdoors.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We have one comment via email, Mayor.
Okay.
That comment is from Mr. John Warren, I would recommend that you as council members not allow cannabis cultivation within residential areas of our city, if allowed at all, it will get out of control, and you will not be able to enforce the ordinance with the city's limited resources.
I think it's already allowed in residential, but it has to be indoors, is that correct, Mr. Westbrook?
Correct, and I just want Chief Collins to chime in here, so Chief Collins, in terms of the outdoor, this is the language that you and your team needs to address this within the city once it's established?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Klein?
And I do want to ask the question, part of our ordinance for cultivation, you know, in residence, isn't it up to, only up to six plants?
Whatever's allowed by the state.
I think it's based on individuals or something, and then with a, with a cap, I think that's what I remember it was.
That's what I thought, we had a cap on it.
Yeah, it's six plants.
I think it's the state's cap.
Yeah, it's a state, state requirement, no more than six, and it's not six per person, it's six per property.
That's what I thought it was.
Okay, so I think the direction is to go ahead and clean that up, Tom, so let's move to the last item, policy direction regarding fireworks sales. I'll go ahead and, I was probably one of the ones that asked for this, I don't have it up on the screen here, but I can, I, I, I'll go ahead and speak to it, I wasn't around my residence this Fourth of July, but when I returned home, I was shocked and concerned to see the amount of firework debris that was in my backyard. The mortar that must have been in these things to sail from the street, 100 to 150 feet over my roof into my backyard, I can only imagine what the explosion was like, the cardboard on this thing was at least an eighth of an inch thick, and probably two inches in diameter, I found no less than 20 of them blown to smithereens, paper everywhere, and yellow powder that now litters all of my patio furniture, my concrete, you know, I, I just, I'm not someone that necessarily wants to get rid of the safe and sane, but I can tell you, it couldn't have been a very safe display, it might have been great for somebody else, but I sure wouldn't want to have a shake roof on my house with something like that going off, and God knows what would happen to somebody's hand if, if the thing went off. So I, I think we need to do something about that, and I've kind of given a lot of thought, and right now, we need to create more bite-sized pieces to deal with that, and by that, I mean, we now have districts for our elections, and perhaps we need to focus specifically on districts, and I'm not saying that this is gonna be the, the end-all be-all, but one of the things I thought is, perhaps we collected a fee from the nonprofits, maybe a hundred or $200 to operate the stand, and then we take that money, and we hire five people for District Three and five people for District One, and within that district, those five people are responsible for driving through the neighborhoods and identifying those that are using illegal fireworks, and report them to the city, because obviously, it's a big task for us to handle it as a, as a city, but I think something needs to be done, because it's, it's. But I think something needs to be done because it's, it's getting out of control.
Mayor Viera, I did get a question from Councilman De Rosset, and I'll just share what I found out. So I checked in with the City of Riverbank regarding their fine structure. There was some thought that maybe they had increased their fine amount to ten thousand dollars for an illegal firework. I didn't find that to be the case. I did have a discussion with their office today. Their fine structure is similar to ours. They have a thousand dollars for a first infraction. They raised it to two thousand dollars if you're caught a second time and three thousand dollars if you're caught a third. So Councilman De Rosset, I didn't find out what you thought. Their fee structure is similar to the City of Series.
We just have a thousand dollar fee structure though, right? We don't have it going up any higher. I mean, you gotta.
It's just a thousand dollar fee structure currently.
Right, you figure those people that have the illegals, a thou, they have more than a thousand dollars with the fireworks they're lighting off. And I, I agree with the mayor. I mean, I, I hadn't thought of that process, sorry, jumped in there. I hadn't thought of that process in regards to maybe the districts. And, you know, we hire an elite group of people, four or five individuals that could take a picture. But would that be enough proof? For example, if they're lighting off some sort of a mortar in their front yard, would that be enough evidence to prove that they were lighting it off?
That's probably a question for City Attorney Allen in. If somebody appealed that citation to an administrative hearing officer. Tom, do you have any decision or discussion on what that may mean?
Well, I know we just, the hearing officer, he's a truly independent third party. And he, I, I can say that he looks at all of the evidence without passion or prejudice. And some people are found, you know, guilty and some not. And it's just a case by case basis.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Mayor, when you're talking about going district by district and, and hiring people to do that, would that be citizens?
I, I don't know, that was just, just, just a concept that I was thinking about. Obviously, it could be vetted a little bit more. But, you know, if we have one district and there's, let's say, five people hypothetically, maybe one of those people takes ten streets and somebody else takes ten. And, and, and just create more of something that's manageable. Because obviously, you know, with the number of officers that we have, it's hard to be everywhere in the city. And, and so, so maybe it's, you know, maybe it's using a third party, you know, like Ontel or somebody, I, I don't know. But right now, what we're doing isn't work, I mean, it's working, don't get me wrong. And what, what, what our emergency services people have done is great. But I think we can do more.
I agree with Mr. Mayor, we can do more. And Ontel is actually what I was thinking as well, is a third party.
My, my concern would have been if you were suggesting citizens, because we certainly don't want our citizens going to a block party kind of atmosphere where there's alcohol, a bunch of people and this one person. I, I, I think that's just a recipe for a disaster. But I also would hope that whatever we come up with, that we don't announce when we're going to do our special drive bys or a special whatever. Because then people are waiting for it that weekend because they know that we have our enforcement out there. And I don't know if that was why this year, it seemed like it started sooner. I, I, I wasn't in town on July the Fourth. I was in Carmel where they absolutely don't allow any type of fireworks. And I have to tell you, it's really pleasant, very pleasant. But I could see from my cameras at home that my street was just blowing up. It was horrible. And I agree that we need to do something. It, it's gotten so ridiculous this year for the first time ever. When we came home, I actually found remnants of eleven different illegal fireworks in our yard. I mean, all the way in, in all kinds of different places. And we've never had that happen in the almost thirty-six years we've lived in this house. So something has to happen.
Well, another comment I would also like to make is I know in some of the Central Coast cities that have allowed it, you're not allowed to let off the fireworks in the public right away. It has to be on your property. If you look at where we're seeing this, we're lit, we're literally held liable if somebody drives through the neighborhood and gets hit while these people are out in the middle of the road letting off fireworks. And everybody wants to do it out in the middle of the road because they can leave their trash and all of, everything else for the city to pick up or for it to be there. There's still stuff in the middle of my road from the Fourth of July, from when people didn't pick up after themselves. So if they want to be responsible, do it in your own driveway. If you're going to mess it up, and, and the reason that they, they do it out in the street is because they know they don't want the, the burn marks and everything and the paper in their own driveway. They want it in the middle of the street. So I think at the very least, we also have to say, if you're going to have safe and sane fireworks, it has to be done on your property. And if you're out in the middle of the road, you're going to get a ticket. I mean, we don't let people play basketball in the street.
That's true.
You know, Mayor, I spoke with Meghur, and she works for Phantom Fireworks this afternoon. And she had asked maybe if there's some opportunities that if, and I know we're not making any evil decisions today, but, you know, all of her vendors, all the people, the nonprofits, the churches, the, the youth sports throughout, to at least have some, some information in regards to what's going on with this. Because, you know, at the end of the day, those nonprofits, I mean, truly do make a lot of money that really get them through the year. So, but I would agree, do it in the driveway, it's a great idea.
Oh, I just don't want to be the first jurisdiction where somebody's house is burned down and there's a, a family of four in the house and it burns down because the fireworks went off and we didn't, we didn't do anything about it. Again, I don't want to be the guy that, you know, rains on everybody's parade. But, you know, I, I think it's out of control.
So, so your suggestion would be having the fireworks stand, excuse me, fireworks stand pay a fee that we could turn around and maybe hire private security to go into the different districts and the different neighborhoods?
That, that would be one suggest, I mean, that's one thought or one suggestion. I don't know how many nonprofits we have, if it's truly a tremendous revenue generator for them. I, I, maybe a couple hundred dollars doesn't seem like much. I, I mean, I know some people spend an absorbent amount on fireworks. So if that helps to police it, then I, you know, I could be supportive of that.
Well, then, then maybe the way we would approach that is that there would be a fee. And if the nonprofits think they shouldn't pay anything to police the illegal fireworks, well, then maybe that's when we have to have a discussion on just banning all of them then. But Mr. Westbrook, on the fireworks permits that are issued now, do you, is there a fee for, for the nonprofits?
Oh yeah, there is a fee. Chief Weiss, do you have knowledge offhand what the fee is for the fireworks permit?
Yeah, it's three hundred and ninety-nine dollars. And we allow up to nineteen permits, this year we had eighteen.
And what do we do with that funding?
It goes into the general fund.
Okay. Councilman Klein?
So with the fines that we've got the last two years, have they went back over to public safety to offset their, their overtime costs for the extra patrols?
Just goes into the general fund, anything that's been collected.
Okay. And I talked to a couple of the nonprofits today that had the fireworks booth. And then I think that, you know, Mayor, you're going in the right direction and the rest of the council that, you know, if we decide to assess them a fee of, you know, a couple hundred dollars or two hundred and fifty dollars, so their permits, you know, five hundred dollars. You know, for them, it's going to be a money well spent to hire, you know, Ontel or Rank Security or somebody else to help patrol. And then, you know, maybe look at the, look at the, look at the area that, with our specific fines, that, you know, how much overtime did we generate with PD? And, you know, maybe we need to see if we could take some of that and generate a little bit more. If we, I don't mean to say generate, but we might have to, for the next couple of years, have a little more overtime to get this under control. Because, you know, Mayor, Vice Mayor Rhino, I'm in the same situation you are. I had ten or twelve mortars in the back of my backyard that exploded. And, you know, the gunpowder on the ground, and I wasn't even home. So it's got to get under control.
All right, so, you know, based on this, I do want to open it up to the public to speak on it. And then ultimately, what I, I, I think we're hearing, Tom, is maybe you can get with Chief Collins and Chief Weiss and, and come up with maybe some alternatives or some things that you might like to suggest. Because obviously, we, we need to expand upon the great work that we've done so far. But I, I, I think I can speak for all the council members. The amount of activity before and even after the Fourth was horrendous. I mean, I had a lot of people ask me about it. So I do want to open it up to the public. It looks like Mr. Brandt has his hand up.
Yes, I will unmute his mic. Mr. Brandt, your mic is unmuted.
Yeah, I, I tend to totally agree with the mayor on, you know, charging the, the legal firework booths X amount of dollars to be able to hire security. You know, because that may get, that may cure the problem in three or four years, you know, if that gets done. And I love the idea about the having to, if you do have safe and sane, where you have to shoot those off in your own property. Because I've seen many times you drive down the road, you see, you see safe and sane, and, you know, they're really neat and everything, but you got little kids running around like chickens with their head cut off, you know, running through the sparklers and stuff like that. And you're driving in your car, you have to stop. And, you know, who's to say that, you know, one of these little children don't take a firework and throw it underneath your car? You know, but, you know, you guys are right, there's absolutely something that has to be done. The profit that the, the safe and sane, you know, from what I used, what it used to be, because we used to have one at our church, it was like fifty fifty, you know. That's how much, you know, the profit was, you know. And this may, if you come down hard on them at first, you know, and like, maybe hire Ontel. You know, and then, you know, maybe that's what needs to be done, you know. And maybe it'll cure it in a couple of years, you know. But then there's also the, the thought of New Year's Eve. It's the same thing, you know, you get the big boomers going, you know. I don't envy you, you know, whatsoever, you know. I mean, I remember you, I used to call for, you know, want the, you know, ban all the fireworks, you know, blah, blah, blah. And I understand where, where Vice Mayor Rhino goes over. And I envy her for being able to go over there, you know, and just, just be in the solitude of, because I mean, you know, there's several of you guys that weren't here, but it was miserable. It really was, I mean, you know, not for, you know, for the veterans, for the old folks. And it went on for a couple of weeks before and then a week after. And, you know, not to mention the dogs, you know. So I, like I say, good luck. Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Okay, it looks like Mr. Yakeley would like to speak.
Mr. Yakeley, I will unmute your mic. Your mic is unmuted.
Yes, I, I think this, this whole tonight, I, I mean, you know, I'm not a lifetime member of the city council, but I've been coming for quite a while. Boy, you guys made more progress tonight than you've made in months and years, I think, for as far as things that go with the local citizens in the community. I mean, you're on a roll, I hope you keep going that way. As far as the fireworks thing, I brought up some of these things years on end. And, you know, I think you got tired of listening to them. But now you seem to be having your own way of putting something forward, which is a good thing. You know, I mentioned before that there are cities in California that do not have fireworks. And the comment I got from some of the city council was, those, those cities have money. Well, they have civic things too, and they have groups. I think, and I've said it before, maybe you ought to stop this fireworks display thing or selling for a couple of years, like a moratorium kind of thing. And at the same time, when the Fourth of July does come out, and people are still going to be doing, enforce that then there too. And we need to try to educate, probably, they can educate within theirself, these civic groups, about other ways they can obtain money, like the Girl Scouts with their cookies. And they make X number of thousands of dollars every year on that. Maybe some of these civic groups that support these teams for these kids, which is a good thing. Maybe they can find some other ways, just like we're trying to find ways to get through this virus, like wearing masks and keeping away from people. We didn't want to do that either, but we have to do something to curtail this problem we got with the fireworks. And everybody on the council here tonight, they all know that this isn't something that you created in your term. This is something that's been coming down the road for years and years, decades. And finally, we're getting a handle on it. So to stop now and not to keep going forward to try to find a fix for this thing, uh, it wouldn't be right. You guys are on a roll, like I said. So, you know, get some security out there next time. You know, probably the, I don't know what the, Chief Collins or Captain Crane wanted to do on that issue when Fourth of July comes again, what the power of the security company does to give to the police on finding these people that violate the aerial fireworks and the huge explosions. But again, you know, I support these people as far as, you know, they, they want to help kids. And, you know, the kids are the people that's going to come after us for sure and try to take over the jobs that possibly you have today. But we need to find another way for these fireworks people to make money. I mean, I don't know that, maybe somebody inside the city council or the city administration that's been in this area before can find some other avenue where they can pick up and make money besides selling fireworks. Okay, thank you.
Okay, looks like we have one more speaker. Kimberly?
Your mic is unmuted.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Kimberly and I'm with the nonprofit here in the Series community. And I heard about your guys' issue about speaking of the fireworks, which this year, I do agree, because of the pandemic, a lot of the fireworks shows and so on were not available for families. So this year, a lot of families purchased fireworks, actually more than ever before for them. I've been doing this maybe the last eight years with our nonprofit. And this was the best fireworks sales we've had had. Some years were not very well compared to this year. And our fees have increased, we do pay many of fees. And we do pay three hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which has increased in those time to the City of Series also, including a lot, a lot of other fees that we pay, the box fee, the space fee, the insurance fee. I could go on and on with all the fees, the fire marshal fee and so on. So it's not a fifty fifty split like someone had mentioned. We also get back to our youth and a lot, you know, as you all know, Series, when it comes to the children in the community, they come from a lot of poverty and low income families, ones that really can't afford sports. And that's the reason why our organization is the cheapest one in town because of the fact that we keep our cost as low as possible so that parents don't have to decide whether they would like to play youth sports or would they like to have food on the table for dinner. And so because of this, what offsets most of our costs is having fundraisers. And the fundraisers of fireworks is one of the best moneymakers that we have. And due to like COVID, we couldn't do like the Girl Scouts and sell cookies door to door, especially when there's all these precautions about the spread and safety and separational distance and so on. And I'm sure the Girl Scouts would not be very happy if we stood on their toes and started walking around selling boxes of cookies when they have done that for years and years, you know. I really think that they should think about the kids, you know, because they are our future. We're keeping them off the streets and not vandalizing. We're keeping them off the streets and not vandalizing your home. I myself was running a booth and I came home to debris in my swimming pool, you know, and I didn't care for having debris on my swimming pool either, or my patio set, you know. Um, we are not the ones that are letting off illegal fireworks. We're selling the safe and sane. Where anyone that approaches our booth, I tell them about, you know, if they ask me, they're looking for the ones that shoot up in there. I tell them that will come with a hefty fine, that is not, you know, legal. Last year, um, I know we also had a meeting, so you handed us a paper and I probably made at least 2,000 copies that I handed out to everybody in my organization, everybody in my booth. I kept them in my car and handed them out to just local people that talk to me or, or, or maybe people that wanted to sign up. I had, I handed out a lot of signage, hung it on, hung it on my booth. Um, nothing like that was provided this year. But we did do that. But I really think the epidemic this year was because of the pandemic and a lot of people had no choice but to do it at home, you know. And I really think that maybe we should do something like Riverbank, um, increase our fines so that way they're more hefty. So maybe they'll think about doing that nonsense and think, hey, do I really want a, a 1,000, a 2,000, a $3,000 fine? Is it really worth it? And I love the idea about keeping children safe in the driveway. I agree with that also. But, I mean, adding an extra 100 or 200 to a nonprofit, that's fine. But maybe we can use some of the money that we use for the fines to, to pay those people to pick up trash. And, I mean, my neighbors, they respect my neighborhood. Um, they picked up all their trash, so I'm not sure where everybody lives. Um, and, you know, if I see someone else's trash, I sweep it up. I don't say, oh, that belongs to the neighbor on the left. I'm going to wait, you know, for them to sweep it up. I'm going to sweep it up just because I love my town, I love my neighborhood and I respect Series. So that's my point.
Looks like we have one more speaker. Louis?
I will unmute your mic.
Am I muted?
Yes, you're unmuted.
Okay, sorry about that. The flashing screen is sometimes tough to, uh, to get used to. Tough to fall to some on that pa, that passion of, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, my name is Louis Lenny. I'm a vice president with TNT Fireworks. We're one of two wholesalers in the community of Series. Uh, first off is let me reassure everybody that what you saw this year was absolutely out of control, not just here locally in the valley, but nationwide and for a lot longer than when, when safe and sane sales are legal in the state of California. We actually made a segment on Good Morning America right around the first week of June that people were seeing such an increase in illegals across the country. Uh, the, the, the debris that you folks are describing from shot from mortars, just so that everyone's clear, that's not what is sold at the stands. That is, those are illegal fireworks. Safe and sane fireworks by law are allowed to be sold only June 28th through July 4th. And by definition, nothing leaves the ground, nothing explodes, nothing's even, um, allowed to be resemble, um, a firecracker or a bottle rocket. And, and I'm sorry, but what I grew up with, and I've been in the fireworks business for 35 years, we used to worry about little stick rockets and bottle rockets coming across the border of Mexico. Um, the power and the items that is available just across the border in Nevada where they can legally sell federal fireworks. It's, it's just incredible. So I, I certainly sympathize. This is something that our company is on the forefront of. I, I wish I could say that this was the first meeting after this Fourth of July that I've spoken to, but I believe that I'm up to eight city councils already that are grappling with what to do and what is and what isn't working. And I just have a couple of points that I would, would make and some, some suggestions to be considered. First off is I'd like to, uh, actually congratulate Series and the fire department. Um, in our opinion, we think they do a outstanding job, not only with the local nonprofits and enforcing the, the safe and sane ordinance, but also you, you write a very high number of citations as it is. Some unknown unnamed neighbor to the north should write as many citations as, as you folks do. There are a couple of things that are available to you that you might want to consider either directing staff to look into, should you decide to rewrite your ordinance. Uh, one of which has been very, very effective is there is an app that we developed about two or three years ago. It's called Nail'em. And actually, if you'd like to, to talk to the city of Manteca, they have been outstanding in the utilization of the, of the Nail'em app. Um, it does allow reporting by citizens. Uh, you can set it up however you'd like. You can have reports go directly to dispatch. You can have direct reports go into either police or fire. Uh, Manteca actually has it set up to be similar to a red light camera where, you know, with, with sufficient videotape or, um, pictures, they can actually send that right to the fire department and the fire department sends the violators a, a citation in the mail after the Fourth of July. So there's a lot of ways it can be customized to whatever your city wants. It's free to use. It's free for, um, not only you, but, but for your, your citizens.
Louis, we, we did utilize that this year.
Thank you. I did not know that, ma'am. Sorry, I didn't do adequate research on, on this. Um, maybe that, uh, might have contributed to the number of citations that you were writing, I would hope. The only other two things I have, I'm not sure if you have a social host component in your ordinance right now. Um, if you don't, a social host is similar to, uh, underage drinking ordinance where you can just cite the homeowner where you see fireworks going off, even if they are not present. It is still considered their responsibility. Um, it's one other way of cracking down. And then lastly, um, in the discussion regarding raising the fees to the nonprofits in order to subsidize people looking for, or, or a, a private patrols looking for, um, illegals, I, I might suggest that, that I'm not an attorney, I don't even get a chance to play one, but that the city attorney might want to weigh in on that because I'm not quite sure that that is legal to, uh, under the auspices of what I'm always told to refer to as the Sinclair paint case that says that fees collected for a specific industry or, uh, need to be specifically denigrated or pushed back into that industry, meaning that the fees that you collect from safe and sane should go towards monitoring and enforcing our product. So anyway, I apologize for going much longer than three or four minutes, whatever your normal public comment time is, and thank you very much.
Mayor, we do have two email comments.
Okay.
First comment is from John Warren. Regarding the sale and use of fireworks of any kind within the City of Series, I would encourage the council members to follow the examples of Cathedral City and change our city rules regarding the sale and use of any types of fireworks. In reading the material provided by staff, all the reasons for disallowing these sales should be noted. This past July was very bad with loud illegal use of fireworks leading up to the Fourth and afterwards. Even last night, there was illegal use of fireworks. This view is not popular with some, but has been in place in many communities within California for a long time. Only one city in Santa Clara County allows sales. The information provided by staff indicates who allows usage, but it also points out the large number who do not allow usage or sales. Our nonprofits and service clubs will have to adjust going forward, just like all the other communities have done who do not allow usage. Next comment is from Steven, Steven Whitney from American Legion Series Post 491. The sa, the sale of safe and sane fireworks is a sole fundraiser for the Series posts of the American Legion. The profits obtained from this event funds the post for the entire year. While we have annual due, an annual due structure for our members, the net funds to the post from the dues does not even cover our annual mailing costs. The Series post provides a wide variety of community benefits. Included, included in those are financial donations to local charities, providing military honors for fallen service members, funding youth programs for local school age children, and providing individual support to veterans' families in a time of need. Canceling the sale of fireworks in 2021 would financially devastate the viability of the Series posts of the American Legion. The intention of the ban appears to be associated with COVID-19 gatherings. The fireworks purchased by families culminate individual family gatherings, no different than the same families having a backyard barbecue. The attendees have the opportunity to wear personal protective equipment and maintain social distancing and still enjoy the presentation. Families conducting supermarket shopping and more are exposed to other persons than when they are watching a fireworks presentation. Using COVID-19 as an excuse to ban safe and sane fireworks is overreaching all science and common sense. We urge the city council to vote in favor of the fireworks sales for the 2021 season.
Good, thank you, Diane. So, um, Tom, you've obviously heard a lot of discussion. Would it be possible for you to take it back to the group and, um, see if you can possibly make some additional recommendations to all of the positive things that we've already done? Obviously, we all have some concerns with, um, the illegal fireworks. Let, let's just be on record for that. I, I, I think the safe and sane ones aren't necessarily the ones that we have problems with. But I can tell you the illegal ones, it, it, um, I had pictures and I did send it to the city clerk. Um, you know, those weren't safe and sane. I can guarantee you that. So, but if you, if you could do that, Tom, I would, I, it would probably be the best, um, moving forward at this point.
Yeah, I think, I think at this point, there's kind of three levels of this. I think one, I'm going to, going to want to spend some time with Chief Collins and, and Chief Wise on the fireworks aspect of it. Certainly a good discussion, uh, this evening on direction potentially heading. We'll see if we can add a couple of other suggestions to that based upon what we heard. So that's kind of on one hand. I think that's more of a, a little bit of a longer term project as it relates to the outdoor cultivation and the sidewalk vending. I think we can get those back to the council a little bit quicker. So I would say we would probably break those up a bit and bring the outdoor cultivation and the sidewalk vending to you a lot sooner than we would the fireworks, um, uh, discussion. But we will go ahead and move in that direction and bring something back for your consideration, uh, probably in the next month or two.
Okay. All right. I appreciate that. So with that, we will move on to council member referrals. Is there anyone on the council that would like to have an item placed on a future agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Um, I would like for the council to reconsider adopting the residency clause, uh, to new employee applications with the question, if hired, uh, would you consider moving to Series? Um, so I would like that placed on a future agenda if possible.
Okay. Anyone else?
I got something, Mayor. I know we had discussions and we did a workshop in regards to the regionalization of fire services. And I just think, you know, seeing how we have the budget happening in September and maybe September might be too soon, but we're going to have a different council possibly to a certain degree. But I think that if it's worth savings in regards to dollars and stuff, that that's something we need to at least take a look at.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, so Tom, can you work that into your schedule over the next few meetings?
Yes.
Okay. Reports, um, I have nothing to report. Uh, Councilmember Dorset?
Nothing.
Councilmember Klein?
Nothing.
Councilmember Condit?
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Rhino?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Hey, let's start with staff. Uh, Ms. Diaz?
Nothing, Mayor.
Your Helen?
Nothing, Mayor.
Your Westbrook?
Yeah, just want to let the council know, um, as of Friday, uh, District Four nomination period closed. There is four, uh, people running for that that were all certified for the election. Um, for those that are interested, District Three, the mayor's seat and the treasurers are all open until, uh, the 12th of August and then they will be closed. So, um, just letting you know that. Um, additionally, um, had some discussions with the school district as Councilman Dorset pointed out. School is now in session for Series Unified. Had some discussion with some of their admin, uh, administrators. They may be looking as an, uh, kind of an alternate site, maybe utilizing one of a city's facilities for some daycare. So just letting the council know that that may be a possibility, that we might be assisting, um, the school district in some regard at some future point. And that's it.
Okay. Chief Wise?
No report this evening.
Collins?
Nothing to report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Padilla?
I have nothing either, Mayor.
Hear me?
Nothing there.
Okay, uh, don't see, uh, is Matt online? I didn't see.
Yes, I am, Mayor. Um, just want to mention that we're going to be starting our fall programming starting October 1st. Registration starts this, um, coming Wednesday. Um, we'll be having hopefully classes here at the community center, smaller sized classes to deal with the issues with the pandemic, but we look forward to reopening soon. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Um, Captain Crane?
Nothing, Mayor.
Hey, if I, hopefully I didn't miss any. Supervisor DiMartini?
Supervisor DiMartini, your, your mic is muted.
How's that?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm never going to get used to this computer. I'm still using mimeograph machines. Um, I was just wanted to remind everybody of Stanislaus County's grant program. I mentioned it, uh, the last meeting. Uh, the program is open now. You can apply online until August 28th. It's, uh, $10 million giving out as grants to businesses, $4 million to nonprofits. And then there's a gift card program for, um, about $1 million. That's if you businesses that say buy one, get one free or get half off on another one. Those are, that's a different type of grant. Uh, this, uh, grant is not a first come, first served. So if you apply on the last day or just in the running as well as the first day, then they're, uh, they're going to be scored and then, um, we'll announce the winners after they're scored. Businesses up to 25 employees get up to $25,000 grant. Businesses of, uh, up to 50 employees is a $50,000 grant maximum. And so I just wanted to make everybody aware of it. You apply online. And, uh, if you have trouble finding it or anything, just call my office and we'll help you get the application online. That's all I have.
Thank you, Supervisor. I don't think I missed anybody. So with that, we will move to adjournment to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which will be held on August 24th at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone.